Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Uniontown's regular city council meeting of May 6, 2021 at 4:30 PM. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Shuhon.
Here.
Mr. Gaddy.
Here.
Mr. Palumbo.
Mr. Basaki.
Here.
Mayor Gurkey.
Here. We have a special guest this evening, Ms. Emmy D'Dola. She has a letter to read. Ms. Laura Kutek will escort her to the podium, please.
My name is Emmy D'Dola, and I will be reading a letter to you today that I wrote to Mayor Gurkey about our environment. Dear Mayor Gurkey and Council, hello, my name is Emmy D'Dola, and I am 11 years old. I am writing to you on behalf of global warming and climate change. I was hoping you could tell the people of Union Town how important it is to recycle, to not litter, and to respect the environment by not polluting the water or the air. Thank you for taking time to read my letter. Sincerely yours, Emmy D'Dola. And I would also like to give a big thanks to Mayor Gurkey for giving me the opportunity to read this letter to you today. It is something that is very important to me, and I would like to give him a big thanks for letting me read this today.
Yes, thank you too, Emmy.
Any comments on agenda items only? Mr. Palyer. Would you go up to the podium, please? Thank you.
My question is, my name is Paul Palyer for the Redevelopment Authority. My question is about item number 72. My questions are, is there going to be a decision made tonight to start charging the Redevelopment Authority rent for their office space? And if so, why, after seven years of working out that office, necessary now to start charging us rent for the office space? Thank you.
I can certainly initially answer that question. So the motion on the agenda this evening is to approve a lease agreement with the Redevelopment Authority. That does include an item for the payment of rent in there. It's my understanding that City Council had evaluated that the space is valuable to the city, and there was some discussion at the last Redevelopment Authority board meeting about the Redevelopment Authority wanting to rent space, including outside of City Hall, so to provide them with the opportunity to stay in City Hall and use that valuable space. That's my understanding. That's why Council has that on the agenda this evening. I don't know if any other comment wanted to be provided, but that's just initially what that specific agenda item is for on the agenda this evening.
Go ahead, Paul. Was there another question that you had besides the question about charging rent? I don't know if you had two questions or not. It may have been misunderstood.
No, my second question was, why now?
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you. Is there any other comments on agenda items only?
Mayor, I have a email comments on agenda items.
Okay, very good.
Just as a point of order, so the city does solicit public comments in writing for the agenda items, or general public comment at the end of the meeting. In order to provide that to the city, it should either be mailed to the city at the city's address here, or emailed to either the email address of the mayor or the city clerk, or personally delivered in writing here to City Hall. If anybody has any questions on those procedures, they can reach out and contact City Hall. But we do want to make clear that that is the procedure presently, under the pandemic emergency declaration that the city is using to accept public comment. In addition, correct me if I'm wrong, but the mayor and the city clerk both checked their emails immediately prior to this meeting to determine and confirm that this was the only public comment that was received, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. I just checked mine now.
All right. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt there.
That's okay. This comment came from Trace Mickens-Thomas. I received it today. He's a resident of the City of Union Town. It says, Dear City Council, it was brought to my attention that Ms. Carmina Taylor, founder of the We Can't Wait PA statewide coalition, statewide advocate for the residents of Union Town, asked Mayor Gurkey and Solicitor Tim Witt yesterday if I could be a special guest speaker at today's council meeting, and she received no response. Therefore, left with no more options to express my concerns, I am submitting my public comment in writing, though I wish I could have spoken these comments in my own voice in person. I will proceed under the dress of these oppressive procedures that have been in place during this awful COVID circumstance we have found ourselves. I would like to know what are the council processes and procedures in writing that delineate what action items for approval can be acted upon without a ratification of a council vote? That would be the circumstance in which that, what would be the circumstance in which that could happen? What would be the sensitive matter that could rush or push through an agenda item vote before a meeting? I am asking because the public should know that item number 70 on the agenda that relates to a vote that is supposed to take place today to authorize the purchase of two Dell computers and other related office supplies for the two new hires that were approved last month or installed yesterday. Let me repeat, I have evidence to prove that agenda item number 70 on today's agenda has already been acted upon without the full public's knowledge or awareness. In my observation, this seems to be a common practice of this council for years, and quite honestly, this should stop. Nothing is very clear for the public to truly ascertain how you run the business of the city in full transparency. We have conducted meetings during this COVID period where the priority of people in attendance has been for the city officials versus the people of the city. You call special meetings when you omit voting on agenda items that should have been replaced on the agenda at the prior meeting. Is it because there is a singular employee for the city that is doing the job of five people? Why is that? Why is it that one person who was not elected by the people of Union Town and was not hired but appointed has so much power? To keep resting on the justification for all these administrative actions by reflecting 19th century codes for a third-class city seems to be desperate at best, in my opinion, and consciously defective in reality. I want to know why these two computers were installed yesterday before they were approved or ratified today. As I've been saying for months, these council meetings during COVID have not been a form of a two-way communication with the residents of Union Town. It has not been in the best interest of taxpayers, but more importantly, it has not been reasonable in allowing us to be a part of the public process you have sworn to do. You are public servants, and once you got elected after the general election, you take a note to serve all the residents of Union Town, not just the council or city officials. We deserve answers to our questions. Though the law may indicate that you don't have to answer our questions, why wouldn't you? Where is your goodwill, City Council? I will also be sending the proof of what I have for all of you. Again, this isn't about the past mistakes that we've all made in our lives. This is about learning from a past mistake and moving forward. When will all of you make the right responsible choices? Remember, everything reverts back to personal responsibility.
I don't know if Council wants me to, there's some legal questions that were raised in there. I don't know if Council would like me to respond to the legal questions, or if Council has any comments that they want to make. I can certainly answer the legal questions.
Couldn't answer the legal questions, if you would, please.
Certainly. So as many of you are aware, the third-class city code governs city government. And that's mandatory. I mean, City Council doesn't pick which code governs city government. That's the state that passed that as a matter of law. And so regardless of when that was passed, it was actually passed in 1913, but it was subsequently reenacted and a full amendment was redone in 2014. So it has been substantially updated over time, but that's not a choice that City Council here has. We're mandated and required to act under that particular legislation. One of the other questions was with respect to the authority that city employees or city officials have. And once again, as you, as members of Council are aware, the authority in the city starts with you all as members of Council and the mayor. You're each the director of a department, and any authority that extends to any other city employee is either delegated or administrated from the individual powers and collectively the powers you have as directors and council. So no one particular city employee has any power or authority that isn't otherwise delegated by City Council or as department heads and directors. You know, the fact that some employees are covering lots of roles, you know, if there's an employee that's doing the job of five people, that may actually be a cost savings to the city in a lot of ways, because you're saving four salaries. But that's not uncommon amongst municipalities for people to be carrying a lot of responsibilities to make sure that things are done as quickly and as efficiently as possible for the benefit of the taxpayers. One of the other questions that was raised as well was the, on agenda items, when can an agenda item be, to action be taken on an agenda item before it's voted on a council meeting? And particularly, I think it was item 70, which was the approval of two computers and monitors, and I believe those are going to be, or have been designated for the two new employees. So to keep in mind, obviously, Council needs to approve items, but Council has already, you know, passed meetings that approve certain items. So for example, you approve your budget every year, at the beginning or at the end of the prior year, and then throughout the year, prior meetings, you've already approved certain actions and certain items. And so if there's action that's been taken in the past that either directly or indirectly constitutes an approval of an item, that's okay. That doesn't necessarily require an immediate approval before Council takes action or the city takes action to do that. And the reason for that is because if you had to wait as council, you typically only meet once a month. If you had to wait for a monthly meeting every month before anything was done, and nothing could be done administratively, it would be very difficult for anything to be accomplished on a timely basis. So, you know, a lot of cases, if something's already been approved, there's a line item in the budget, department heads and directors can go ahead and take action to approve purchases, particularly if it's something that's necessary for an employee to do their job for the benefit of the taxpayers, that's not a problem, that certainly isn't appropriate. And then at the subsequent city council meeting such as this, it would be a ratification action, which is essentially saying, hey, look, council was aware that this was already done, was in approval with it previously, but now as a collective body is now officially approving that, so there's a record of that prior action and the fact that that has the approval and consent of City Council. So hopefully that addresses some of the legal questions there. Once again, I just wanted to offer that for you guys in case you'd have the same questions. Certainly, if you wanted to answer any questions or address any of those points, you're welcome to do that as well, but not required to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Any comments on the letter that was received? Is there any other communications from the public, Ms. Marshall?
Not on the agenda items.
Okay, very good. I'll get to my, I have a few comments to make this evening. I want to thank everyone for coming again. On April 25, 2021, former mayor and city councilman Robert E. Jones had passed away. He had served the city for 14 years in a very good capacity. Could we just take a moment to remember Mr. Jones? Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Jones, for your service. On the next point, I'd like to welcome our two new employees that have come to the city. I'd like to welcome Ms. Laura Kutek, Director of Planning and Community Relations, and Mr. Mark John, Director of Community Development. As you will see in their reports, they have both hit the ground running. Thank you for both coming to serve the city. Again, Ms. Emmy D'Dola, I want to thank her again for her presentation, and upon reading her letter, it inspired me to do my best in recycling and keeping the earth clean. Also, I've asked Mr. John to look into a grant for recycling cans. Mr. John will give an update on this grant in his report. A lot of talk in the city about a comprehensive plan. This has been needed for a long time, long before I arrived. I've been told since I got here, we don't have a comprehensive plan. We can't do a lot of things pertaining to grant writing and other things. So, but I've been told it's been too expensive, too time-consuming. When Mr. John came on board, I directed him this job and many other jobs that he's going to have, to look into finding alternative ways of funding this comprehensive plan and example, grants, and he will elaborate on this in his report also. Sheepskin Trail. Whenever I came on board 16 months ago, I spoke about completing the length of the Sheepskin Trail in the City of Union Town. After a few meetings, I realized that there's been various people showed me obstacles for delaying this progress. When Mr. John came on board, I asked him to assist me in moving this project forward. Again, in his report, he will give us an update on how we're moving forward with the Sheepskin Trail here in the City of Union Town. Another item that is on my plate is the Bailey Park Lights. I'm sure everyone is aware that the lights have been taken down in October, and they were deemed unsafe. Since then, since the lights have been taken down, there's progress has been made to getting them back up. The baseball coach had contacted Mr. Palumbo and myself, saying, can we play baseball under the lights this year? And we had to unfortunately tell them no, that that wouldn't be possible. Earlier this week, we got together with a few other people, and we started to get the lights project up and running, and we'll give you an update on that in the future. Marshall Park. I'm sure everyone knows where Marshall Park is. Over two years ago, there was a plan created to renovate this park. Approximately $2,200 had been raised for an estimated $300,000 project. We would like to see this valuable property, but it has been neglected to host events in the near future. We're working on getting this project up and running. We had a cleanup day in the City of Union Town, April 24, 2021. It was very successful, had a lot of participation. Ms. Kutek will elaborate on the cleanup day during her report. City Hall. I'd like to bring your attention to the City Hall landscaping outside. It needed some work done, and recently, a dedicated crew from the Public Works and Sewerage Departments cleaned and manicured the landscaping around the building. Thanks to all who assisted, and I've said in the past, if a property is cleaned up, the neighbor's going to clean up their property too. That's the way it's supposed to work. And hopefully, that'll set a standard for downtown, and hopefully, Story Square and Everly Square won't be far behind in cleaning up like we've done here in the city. On a final note, Denise Stevens, the city's licensing clerk, has just sent out past due notices for the business licenses, and hopefully, if you haven't paid your business license, please send your payment into the licensing clerk. That's about all that I have. Thank you for your time. Ms. Hodge, monthly report.
Good evening. The discount period officially ended on April 30. However, we are still receiving mail that has been postmarked for April 30. As I stated in the last month's report, we are still receiving checks without the correct date, insufficient amounts to pay their taxes, and without signatures. We are asking all the residents and the businesses to please review their tickets and checks to make sure they are properly documented. Also, there has been some data breach issues, and RAC, that's our computer software company, has been working with me to get these issues handled, these issues handled and resolved as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, it could be with our own data server, so we're working on each day to look at different things to see what's going on. Our process is here to help our taxpayers, and we are doing everything possible to achieve this goal. Everyone may not understand the process, but I am available to discuss any concerns that you may have. Please remember that the Treasurer's Office is open for convenience from 7:45 to 3:45 PM, Monday through Friday, to make your payments. After 3 o'clock PM, we will not accept cash. As I have stated in the past and will continue to state, please remember that we do have a night drop box, but please do not put cash in that box. Remember, the face period is from May 1 through June 30, 2021, and the penalty takes effect effective July 1, 2021, and the last date to make your 2021 payment is December 30, 2021. If you have any questions or any concerns, please contact my office at 724-430-2905, or you can email me at ahodge@atlanticbroadband.net, or uniontowncitytreasure@gmail.com. I thank you for your time. I have also attached to your packet, Council, the different things that are going on with the system that you can see. Some of the items, you'll see that they were entered into the system on March 15, and by April 6, they were unpaid in the system. We don't know why it's going on, but you can see that they're on the reports, yes, in the package. So there's several different things that I put in your packet that you can see the difference of what's going on with the system, but we are working through them and trying to make the changes as quickly as possible. We're putting this stuff in, and by the end of the month, some of the stuff is disappearing out of the system. We don't know if it's a process of saving, a process of, we think it's saved, but it does show on the report at the end of the day, but at the end of the month, it's not there. So we are working to do that diligently. Is there any questions?
What types of data breach are you talking about?
Well, RAC thinks that he doesn't know if somebody's going back into the system, uncheckeding a payment. He doesn't know if the system's not saving it, like we think it's saved at the end of the day, and then 24 hours, it's not. He looked at some password protection issues to see if we could do password protection so that we could catch it. He also runs a report, so I run a report at the end of the day, my staff runs a report, and we try to match it to make sure that it matches, but sometimes, like a couple hours later, it's not saved. So we don't know if it's something within the server, something within the program.
It's not any outside source?
We don't know. We don't know. That's what they're trying, he's trying to work out the system.
And can you give us an update on the check readers?
On the check readers? We haven't started that process. The check reader process is that a file has to be stored on my computer, and if I'm having problems with the software, I don't want to have somebody's check information onto my computer, and then it becomes a breach of province with the public, so that would be a big issue as well. And we have to make sure we have a secure network. If I'm having problems with the system as far as saving the tax information, I don't want to put any personal information with checks out there for people to be able to get into that. We have to find out what the problem is first. Any other questions? Well, gentlemen, if you will excuse me, today's National Day of Prayer, and at Five Corners they're having prayer, and my church is participating in that, and I would like to join them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Bear is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept the report of the treasurer for the month of April 2021, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Bear is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the April 1, 2021, regular council meeting and the April 8, 2021, special council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Bear is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize a refund to the following taxpayer for LST taxes. Taxpayer Thomas Renninger, 25 Foreman Avenue, paid $52 to LST tax, and he did not make $12,000. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Bear is all by the City Council of the City of Union Town. Council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured from the City of Union Town for April 2021 invoices. In the general fund, $88,395.35. Sewer fund, $124,173.93. Recreation, $1,925.98. Highway, $14,325.03. Off-street, $12,207.90. Community development, $87.60. Recycling, $3,974.30. Library fund, $30,000. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes.
Mayor, the next resolution is to accept a paving bid. We have five bids here, I believe. I opened the morning.
Yes, sure. Their bid is for $135,000 even.
Send it down to Tim, please.
Is this for one particular project, or?
It's for paving. It says on the bid, all the streets that are listed, doesn't it, Tim?
Yeah, the location.
Search for multiple streets.
Yeah, the location of the work is Peter Street, Gallatin Court, Penn Street, Beeson to the railroad tracks, Gallatin Avenue, Penta Church, and Arch Street, South to Peter.
Thank you.
Their bid is $70,509.69.
$70,509.69?
This is from Anderson Excavating. Bid of $90,883.60. 60 cents. This is Morgan excavating. This is El Grande Industries. This is Redstone excavating.
Okay, of all the five bids that we received, costable construction was low bid of $70,509.69. Is there a motion to accept the low bid?
Motion to accept.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Just as a, because the, we haven't had the chance to fully review these, if we could just make that motion up for approval, a low bid pending approval by the city engineer and city solicitor.
Correct.
That'd be good, if that's not already part of the motion.
Yeah, significant difference there, too. And the bids, there's a significant difference in the bids.
Very much so.
So we're gonna have to look at, you know, make sure they're.
Everything's right.
On the same page we are. I counted six bids. Six, there were six bids.
You're right. Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the paving bid of costable construction for the 2021 paving project for the City of Uniontown in the amount of $70,509.69 pending approval of city engineer and city solicitor. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve payment of $950 to Zach Claybaugh for repairs for damage to his vehicle when the arm from the paystation at the Penn Street garage came down toward his roof. I did ask for another estimate from Mr. Claybaugh. I didn't, I only received this one estimate from the company that is attached to your packet for $950.
Did he go through you guys? Did he like call you guys? Oh, you, okay.
Do we need more than one bid, Tim?
He just sent in the one quote.
The $950.
No, you do not have to have more than one quote.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
I guess I'd have preferred to have multiple, but if, you know, if this is what happens, it happens, so, yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
I did check with the insurance. We would have had a $500 deductible on this, so. Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify the purchase of two Dell OptiPlex 9060 Intel 15 computers with two monitors and two printers for a cost of $1,399.94 for both for use in the offices of Planning and Community Development and Community Development Coordinator. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
So we'll have to send them back.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize Community Development Coordinator Mark John to attend the Department of Community and Economic Development CBBG sub-grantee virtual training to be held in June. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Uniontown and the Uniontown Redevelopment Authority for rent of City Hall office space for $800 a month effective May 15, 2021. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo? Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for an RFP for a City of Uniontown Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Tim, do you want to explain some of that?
Yeah, please. Certainly, excuse me. So this, this agenda item would be for a comprehensive plan to be, this is the beginning process of getting a comprehensive plan completed. So comprehensive plan is an item that's generally required under the municipality's planning code. It's the opportunity for the city to enact kind of a vision of what it wants to do with respect to quality of life and development within the city. Typically, you know, these plans are good for a period of years, and they're closely tied to your zoning as well. Because they're as complicated and as time-intensive as they typically are to generate, you don't do those plans in-house. You typically have to go to an outside consultant to prepare those plans for you, as have the other municipalities here in the county that have those plans in place. This would be a request for proposals from consultants to provide that professional service to the city, and so this motion would be to authorize those requests for proposals to be prepared to set out.
What does generally run?
You mean the comprehensive plans? I mean, they, they run the gamut. I mean, you could, you could, you could have a comprehensive plan, depending on the complexity, the scope, anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 for a comprehensive plan for a municipality the size of Uniontown.
And they're, are they not, they're essential to have in place for pursuing grants? I mean, they're, they're looked upon fondly by those who, you know, provide grants or that you apply to.
Yeah, absolutely. So that is a precondition and requirement for a lot of grant funding, is that you have a current comprehensive plan in place in order to qualify for certain grant funding. Certainly not all grant funding, but some grant funding does have that as a requirement, so.
It would give us the availability to go after more grant money.
Yeah, that's correct, so.
So it opens us up to a lot more.
Yeah.
You would be able to use your comprehensive plan to support some additional grants. Your current comprehensive plan is from 2002, I believe, so, you know, it's almost 20 years old at this point. You may recall the county and then one of your sister cities, Connelsville, had just gone through a similar process within the last couple of years to update their comprehensive plans as well. So it is, you know, it is something that is oftentimes integral to getting grant funding for other projects in the city.
Mr. Shuhon, I believe you're.
Yes, thank you, yes. Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize Community Development Coordinator Mark John to send notice by letter to city business owners that are along the projected sheepskin trail. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to acknowledge and confirm that no city official or employee is authorized to request, issue, or tender any bank, counter, certified treasures, or other check or negotiable instrument on any city account, one, that does not contain the countersign signatures of the Director of Accounts and Finance as the Chief Fiscal Officer, the City Controller, the City Treasurer, and the Mayor, or two, that is not approved in writing with the request and warrant believed processed through the city's requisition process, which request and warrant contains the countersign signatures of the Director of Accounts and Finance as the Chief Fiscal Officer, the City Controller, the City Treasurer, and the Mayor, and to acknowledge and confirm that any such check issued in violation of this policy constitutes a violation of Third Class City Code and shall constitute a violation of city policy. This policy is implemented as an integral part of and shall be added to the city's financial accounting, management, and control policy. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for sale the following three city vehicles that are out of service. A 1996 Ford Super Duty diesel tour truck, a 1999 one-ton dump truck, a 1989 Elgin street sweeper. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, authorize the Bailey Park Use Agreement for use of the park by a local community group on May 16, 2021, as presented. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Who's using it?
It is.
Is it here?
Yeah, they sent a letter.
Crosswords of ministry?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an agreement buying between Vincent Johnson LLC, DBA, De Marcos Bistro &amp; Cantina, and the City of Uniontown to hold an event in relation to its business for the public within the City of Uniontown, and to make available certain public parking and other areas available for said event. Agreement attached here, too. The date for the event is Friday, July 9th, from 4 until 12 a.m. Saturday, July 10th, from 12 p.m. until 12 a.m. And Sunday, July 11th, from 12 p.m. until 9 p.m. Mr. Basaki?
I'm sorry, just reading this here. Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve a city-sponsored 5K runway walk on July 4th, 2021, in the City of Uniontown. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within states' rights of way, whereas the Department of Transportation requires the City of Uniontown to pass a resolution to authorize the placement of banners or signs, and to set certain limits on said banners or signs, and whereas the City of Uniontown wishes to allow banners or signs relative to regional or local functions or charitable affairs, this is a request from City Mission to place a banner across Fayette Street for their 5K run on. I believe it is.
August 21st?
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs and banners within states' rights of way, the city-wide, the city-sponsored 5K is also requesting a banner across Fayette Street from 7:1 until 8:23. Mr. Palumbo? Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City of Uniontown, by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire the following park directors for the 2021 summer season for Grand Street, Bailey Park, and Chestnut Ridge. Grand Street start date, May 28th, Demita Jones, $12 an hour, Tyler Drafton, $10 an hour, Harry Whitfield, $9 an hour. Chestnut Ridge start date, June 6, 2021, Gianna Schusler, $8 an hour, Matty Spiker, $8 an hour. And for Bailey Park, start date, June 6th, Josh Jordan, $8 an hour, and Will Snyder, $8 an hour. Mr. Basaki? Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for bids to repair three light pole concrete bases at Bailey Park. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
I got a question. The rest of the light fixtures is fine, it's just the bases that needed replacement?
The three alpaca bases. Didn't notice the crack in it, the bolts broke off from wind and, wind and, did it under 50 years, so, they're on the side of caution, took them down, so that.
The lights need fixed. I mean, we've already awarded that to an electrician. The city's still responsible for the materials, but yeah.
This is for the bases.
Thanks.
If I may, the bases themselves, your original bases were extremely small, way too small for the light towers that were in place, and the actual failure were those concrete bases because they weren't round enough, more deep, and the new bases, I'll have to give Kim the design for them, they're going to be a lot larger, a lot deeper with reinforcement, the anchor and bolts will be a lot deeper in there to support the light towers. That vibration of wind would basically is what caused it.
Thanks.
Do you have the designs drawn, or you already have them done, or you have to do them again?
I have them ready.
Mr. Gaddy? Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Here is all by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize Community Development Coordinator Mark John to apply for a 902 DEP recycling grant. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Cam?
Yeah, there's a...
There's one in here about the...
That was supposed to be pulled from your packet.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Mr. Pal, you have something to say?
Just remember, our agenda, the agenda is posted on the website, we don't have the information.
I can't hear you.
Oh, maybe go up to the podium, please. Hey, Paul, excuse me, Mr. Palia. Could we wait to have your comment until general comments at the end?
Sure.
Thank you. Monthly reports, code enforcement, Mr. Thomas?
Month of April had 26 new complaints, 22 cases resolved positively, and I'm carrying over 38 into May. Grass is growing earlier this year, and I don't know what kind of disconnect people have in their head. If they own property, they don't think they have to cut the grass, but there's a big disconnect. I don't know, you know, they need medicated, or they're stupid, or what the problem is, but I'm just, I'm just going to say it bluntly. I mean, there's no way to candy coat it. If you own property, you cut the grass. It's common sense, like taking a bathroom and brushing your teeth. So, uh, but we're working through it. Uh, that's about it. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Fire Department Chief Griffith, Joe?
Want to go first, Buck?
No.
All right. For the month of April, Fire Department assisted on 68 calls. 14 were fire-related, 24 motor vehicle accidents, excuse me. They had four extracations or rescues. There were two natural gas leaks, one downed power line, one flooding issue. They also took 15 government and public service calls, and they had seven false alarms. So that was a total of 68 incidents that they took care of for the city. Again, I think Buck and the rest of his crew, firefighters, were taking care of our city and keeping it safe. Thank you, Buck.
You're very welcome. Really don't have anything else to add. It was a busy, busy month. Last weekend was the, the annual Fayette County Fireman's Association's Fire School, and a lot of the people, a lot of our people participated. Some elevator rescue classes, they ran, they used the elevator at the parking garage in the N1 Center, and very successful classes this weekend. I really don't have anything else to add. Anybody got any questions, comments?
Thank you, Buck. Thank you for your services always, sir. Police Department Chief Cox.
During the month of April, the Uniontown City Police Department responded to 833 calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included 31 vehicle accidents, three assaults, two burglaries, eight criminal mischiefs, 14 disturbances, 33 domestics, four drug offenses, 11 fire calls, 12 harassments, three public intoxication, 18 disorderly conduct, 27 emergency medical assists, seven shots fired caused 50 suspicious activities, eight suspicious persons, 27 thefts, and served 10 warrants. Officers made a total of 16 criminal arrests and issued 20 citations, and also conducted numerous foot patrols throughout the city and along the Sheepskin Trail. The only other thing that I wanted to add, you know, as everybody is aware, in our country there is a lot of contention between law enforcement and the community and relationships, and we at the Uniontown Police Department, we're fortunate to be in this city, number one, but number two, we're fortunate to have people in our community like the Neighborhood Watch Group, Tanya Mathis, Angela Brown, who really act as a bridge between the citizens and the police department. They work with the police department to give us an opportunity to interact with the citizens, and I think we are very blessed because it's actually interesting to go home and watch the news and then look back on a day at work and say, we're really not dealing with what the rest of the country is, and I think we're very fortunate for that. And so I want to thank the city and thank them for that as well. Thank you.
And thank you for your service, Chief Cox. Very much so. Director of Public Works, Director of Public Works, Mr. Polwinski?
This month for the total sewage collections, we took in $201,959.46. I believe now the water company started enforcing shut-offs again, so that helps persuade people to pay their sewer bills and our profits start going up from that compared to last year at this time. I'd like to say the cleanup day we had a few weeks ago did go well, even though sometimes some of the areas, it only takes a week to look the same. The mayor asked me if I could get a crew of guys to go out the week prior to that, and we were able to fill up a roll-off and to hold tracks to load the prior week before the cleanup day. Aside from that, we've been working a lot with the water and gas company, with all their projects they have going on, locating our sewer lines and fixing as they cross them or damage them as they go by. It is grass season again, so we have been and are trying to keep up with collections. We're doing that Monday and Fridays between the street department and the sewage guys. We have been doing pretty well, keeping up, but just please remember and be patient, that's not our only duty, and we still have our normal day-to-day operations to handle. As far as that, that's about it, that's all I have. Now, we did have a few small, or not really small, they were kind of significant breakdowns. Our backhoe, we had to send it to the dealer to get serviced, and it wasn't a light bill, but equipment's old and machinery isn't cheap to fix. The, we had to have the factory come in and look at the sweeper also, but it's back up and running now and be back in the field.
Thanks, John. Thanks for the service as always. Redevelopment Authority, it's Mr. Palia or Mr. Rayborn?
I don't have a good bit.
Okay, very good.
Were you also going to speak, you're going to speak for the Redevelopment Authority too, then?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have you, we'll have you speak after Mr. Rayborn.
Thanks for having me tonight. Want to let you all know that we've been working with Keystone Utility Construction for the cleanup of Redstone Creek and Colic Run, the debris removal. They've worked 13 days and they have removed 125-plus ton of trees and other debris throughout the stream. I'll pass this book, this paper, this folder down to you guys. This is the reports they give us on a daily basis, so you can see how much work, how much work they've done and some of the streams that they did. I was out this week because of all the flooding that we were in, there was calling for flash flooding, and I was looking at the streams, and it was nice to see the water flowing and not debris holding the water back. So we're getting there, we still have a lot to do, but we're working on it.
Where'd they start at, Mark?
They started back behind Community Action Agency. They did underneath the bridge at Rendell Station, the railroad there. There was three, there's three chambers there. There was only one that was open. Now there's three open. When I was there the other day, when it was raining and the water was high, all three chambers were full of water and it was moving really fast. So it's good to see. We dropped the water roughly 12 inches in locations, some 24 inches in other locations because of the removal of the debris. It took them two and a half, two and a half Sundays to clean underneath Fayette Street from where the storage units are, all the way to where the bar is, the back of the bar. It took them two and a half weeks because they had to work from one side, which was the post office side. So they were working from there and pulling everything through. There were trees, and you can see them in there. They couldn't even get them in their dump truck, they had to put them in a flat, on a flatbed to get them out of there.
So they pulled out the roots and all, like?
Well, they were, they were loose. They were just laying there, but they did cut some trees too and pulled some trees out and pulled a lot of muck out that it could. Actually, they used a pretty neat tool. They used an air knife, which I've never seen operated. It's a high, it's a compressed air, and they would get in the water and just blow it, and it would open up, open up the soot, the silt. And then now you can see actually river rock back in the stream. So it's nice to see that it's working. We will have a little bit of money left over, so I'm hoping that what we're going to do is talk to K2 about the next step, and hopefully we can get some additional funding through flood mitigation grants to keep it going, because these guys are great to work with. They're, I mean, there's four of them in the water the entire time. They wear waders, they have hooks, they're pulling garbage out, they're pulling stuff out, they're cutting trees underneath. I have a video on my computer where they're underneath the bridge at Fayette Street with a flashlight, cutting trees to get them from being unhooked from the, from the, from the bridge.
It's probably a lot much better.
Yeah, it is, it really is.
Is it pulling after photos?
Those are all during photos, but if you stop up the office one day, I could show you the videos. If you look on those files, there's a little thing that says MOV at the bottom. Those are the videos you can see, so. And I have some on my phone, too. You guys are more than welcome to see those.
That's great. I need them, man.
We, we're working with K2. We have the bid packets done for our street reconstruction. We'll be doing nine streets this year. That bid will go out. It'll be awarded on June 16th at the Redevelopment Authority's regular meeting. Should be in the paper within the next week, week and a half. Brian Lake took a vacation, so we're, we moved back a couple of days. We also, we met with the contractor for the 92 West Main Street Sewer Project. They will be starting at the beginning of June and be completed within two to three weeks. Their company name is KGD Contracting, really nice guys. I think they'll work well. John and I were with them. They understood everything that we wanted done. We had to reroute the original project slightly because we couldn't get some right-of-ways, so we're going in the original right-of-way back into, to get the, to get the job, the process done. At the Redevelopment Authority Board meeting, if you guys didn't hear, the Redevelopment Authority Board wants to invite mayor and council and anyone else to attend our regular monthly meetings, which are held the third Wednesday of the month here in this room at 4 o'clock. We also post a Zoom link on the Redevelopment Authority's Facebook page, which is Uniontown Redevelopment, or Redevelopment Authority, the City of Uniontown, and anybody's welcome to attend. We welcome everyone to come. Any questions?
Well, with the last three days of rain, that had to make a difference, because we hardly had any flooding issues, right? From the last three days that it rained?
So that's the key then, Mark, huh?
I believe that's part of the key. There's a lot more to it. The banks need, need reset. Is that the right word, John? Reset? Or reconstruct it? Or I don't know what you call it, because...
Or banks.
The banks of the streams have been, over the years, they've gotten growth in them. So...
The banks need reshaped a little bit.
Thank you.
The rain, it was a big rain that occurred two nights ago, not nearly what occurred back in 2018 and 19 when all the flooding was going on. I mean, we did get close to two inches. Those rain events from 2019 and 2018 were actually rain events where you got more than two inches of rain in less than 45 minutes. So although there was a lot of rain, and you could clearly see that the water level in Redstone has, has dropped because of the activities that are taking place, it was much needed, very labor-intensive because of the heat and heat processes, you can't put any machinery in the stream. So, I mean, it's all labor-intensive, manpower, cleaning out, the pouring, and certainly, certainly helping a lot within, within the city limits. And hopefully, the municipality down below and the upstream municipality will continue the project. You know, all we've done is push through, the blockage downriver. So if North Union doesn't take over and clean out that direction, it's just a fact.
You said that before. Did they have plans in order, though?
They're, they're reaching out and trying to get money, like the city got money for this project, so if that money comes available later, we'll...
How far, Mark, how far is this project go to?
We're doing both Redstone and Colic Run, the entire length. And North Union...
It's the city limit.
Just the city limits. And North Union did get $300,000, and they actually contacted me and wanted to know some information about how we did our, our study and all that. So I told him, explained to him how we did that, so. Any other questions?
Very good. Mr. Pal, you have something to add?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Just real quick, what I wanted to, what I commented about the agenda, I had a number 72, it reads that enter into a lease agreement for rental. None of the agendas we have, or the agenda on the website doesn't have an $800 figure on it. I thought maybe we need to negotiate on a rental price. That's my butt-head comment. My non-butt-head comment is, I just want the councilmen and the mayor, that my board on redevelopment, it's been a hot topic lately, redevelopment. My board's focused, they're still dedicated, we're concentrating on our projects and our monies right now. We're going to continue, even though we don't know what's, what the future's going to be, we don't know what light hits after redevelopment. But, and reiterate, Mark said we want to invite, make, invite the mayor, councilman, and Mr. John to our meetings, to start attending our meetings, so that we can try to facilitate a smooth transition. You guys can be a little more aware of what we're doing, what goes on, a lot of our projects.
What does it mean, what does it mean for the 90?
And I think it'll be good for everybody, too. You guys be informed, and it'll be a nice transition in 2022.
That's at 3 o'clock?
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock.
If you need the Zoom, ring back 15 million of the Zoom, it'll be not available.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn gave us free Zoom, so that's why we can do Zoom and person.
Community Development Coordinator, Mr. John?
First, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for giving me the opportunity to serve our city. I'm humbled at the opportunity. Just a little progress on what we've been doing the last two weeks. A lot of digging on the Sheepskin Trail. We met with the Fayette County Redevelopment Authority and K2 Engineering, several of Mr. Over's employees, and we thank you for that, they were very insightful, to gather some initial information as to where the project currently stands. And correct me, Mr. Over, if I'm wrong on any of these, engineering is complete, all rights of way are secured, other than those owned by the Southwest Pennsylvania Railroad, including the abandoned railway tracks that need to be exhumed. We're waiting on the Public Utilities Commission to sign the agreement between the City of Uniontown and the Southwestern Pennsylvania Railroad Company, giving the city the right to exhume the tracks and begin the initial build-out of the project. And K2 Engineering is committed to helping us learn how to secure further grant money to fund the construction of the project. We've contacted the Public Utilities Commission to see where they are in signing the document, and we're awaiting a response. We've contacted the governor's office and extended an invitation to view our plans of completing the unfinished link of the Sheepskin Trail that runs through the city and the impact it can have on our city in terms of economy, healthy living socially and recreationally, just to name a few. We've talked with enthusiasts, local business owners, and trail users to gather insight. We've had several meetings with Tom Petrus, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Trails for Fayette County, to discuss the progress and potential for the trail. We currently meet a few times a day with a private consultant who wishes to be unnamed, who has managed projects on a large scale and is managing one currently in Philadelphia along the Schoolkill River. This gentleman wishes to remain anonymous because he is donating his time and services. And we have drafted a letter to property and business owners who may be affected by parking and/or traffic changes along a three-block stretch of Beeson Avenue. Uh, thank you, council, for passing, and mayor, for passing the resolution to send this letter. We will be holding public meetings to discuss these potential changes in parking and traffic. Uh, we met with representatives from Congressman Rushenthaler's office to see what funding may be available from their end of the unfinished link, as well as improvements to be made at Bailey Park, which sits on the proposed site of the Sheepskin Trail. Uh, at Bailey Park, the lights, we have also started talking about that, and that was also addressed in this meeting. Uh, the city's comprehensive plan, we have begun, and thank you, council again, and mayor for approving the resolution to allow us to send out requests for proposals. We've been working with this same private consultant, who is again donating his services to get us going in the right direction. Once we send out the requests for proposals, we will begin advertising for public meetings to form a city planning commission. We've begun talking to property and business owners, as well as others who have a stake in the city's progression and in which direction, direction they would like to see the city go. Having a comprehensive plan, as it was pointed out, is essential to us becoming a Keystone community, as well as opening us up to a lot more funding than what is currently available to us. Um, in other matters, uh, we had a meeting with Lauren Yeoman of State Farm regarding city beautification opportunities, some matching donation opportunities, as well as a grant that State Farm provides. Um, in other topics, we started to research how we can, um, better the city parking situation. We researched parking systems that enable customers to use credit cards, phone applications, as well as cash. And we have started talking to business and property owners again on what they would like to see done with this parking situation in town, and how we can come to a resolution that is good for everybody involved. Uh, the recycling container grants, again, thank you, uh, mayor and council for passing that resolution. Um, we are, we have contacted the DEP, as well as Sheila Shea, who is the Recycling Coordinator for Fayette County, regarding this grant, and they have promised to keep us abreast of any upcoming trash container grants as well. Uh, finally, uh, that Marshall Park project, to which the mayor alluded earlier in the meeting. Uh, we have contacted Ellen Almer, who has donated plans to, um, this Marshall Park, I want to say pavilion, amphitheater, gathering and meeting place. Um, and we are in the process of looking at grant money for that as well. Last nine days, that's what we've been working on.
That's it?
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Gaddy, I'm, I'm learning as, learning as I go here.
See, I got a smart comment.
No, but I thank you all again for the opportunity. I'm humbled at the opportunity to serve our city and, and bring more economy and business and factory and the things that we as a city need that don't have while complementing those cities or those businesses that have been in the city for so long. So again, I thank you. Are there any questions on what we've been doing? Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. John. Thanks for your service.
Thanks, Mokey.
Director of Planning and Community Relations, Ms. Kutek?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to take this time and thank Emmy for spending time with us and sharing her thoughts on this important topic that should be a concern for everyone. I think it takes a lot for an 11-year-old girl to write a letter to the mayor and show up and present that to everyone. So thank you again.
She did so well.
Yes, she did. Secondly, a thank you to all who participated in the City of Union Town Spring Cleanup Day, especially Mayor Gerke and Mrs. Gerke. We had volunteers from local churches, neighbors, friends of the city, our police chief, fire chief, and his crew. Special thanks to City Clerk Kim Marshall, Code Enforcement Officer Matt Thomas, John Pawlinski, and his public work crew. We are planning to continue this beautification of our city in the fall. Several meetings have been held in an effort to seek funding for various citywide projects. Specifically, a meeting with Congressman Guy Rushenthaler's District Chief of Staff, Nate Navala, was unsuccessful in giving us direction to seek funding. While that meeting bore no fruit, we are optimistic with continued efforts. We will acquire the monies for our future targeted projects. Meetings with State Farm franchise owner Lauren Yeoman, Muriel Nuttall, Kaylee Moore, the Director of Community Relations Coordinator for Fayette County, were very informative and promising. During a staff meeting with Mayor Gerke, City Solicitor Tim Witt, City Clerk Kim Marshall, and the Director of Community Development, Mark John, a suggestion was made to streamline City Hall's social media platform. I am developing a social media policy and creating a single official City Hall Facebook page. In closing, I have been working on several events that will hopefully bring a sense of pride and excitement to our wonderful city. First, celebrating Union Town's 245th birthday, featuring a 5K run walk throughout the city, and taking this event to the next level next year. And remembering 9/11 service, featuring acquired dignitaries and a first responder salute. And last but not least, there's a lot on my calendar, but want to mention Union Town Second Annual National Faith in Blue. That will be held in October at Bailey Park. Also, keeping with the tradition, Mayor Gerke will be presiding over a memorial service hosted by the Board of Directors of Union Cemetery, better known as Oak Grove. All are welcome to attend and participate in their old-fashioned Decoration Day service to be held at the West Main Street location, Sunday, May 30th, 2021, at 3:00 PM. Thank you to Janet Marker for including us in this special event. On a personal note, thank you, Mayor Gerke and councilmen. I appreciate the time and effort spent by your team to interview me and review my application. Please be assured that I will do my best to make you proud of my efforts. Any questions?
Thank you, Laura. Thank you for your service. Any public comment, Ms. Marshall?
I did have one, Mayor, um, from Larry Hill. I'm just gonna read what he, he wrote. Um, "Okay, I got a few things I need to, you to address. Lemon Street, number 17. That guy is working on quads and stuff. They're racing up and down the alley at high speed. Somebody's gonna get hurt even when he's in his truck. He's going up and down the alley 60 miles an hour, which is ridiculous if someone in my family gets hurt because they are speeding up and down the alley. I'm going to be highly upset. I know that Jason Cox knows who this is because they've been there quite a few times with shootings and things." Also, Curve Street, number 35 and 37, haven't cut their grass, still have the cat issue, a lot of stray cats running around.
Larry Hill.
Was it Larry Hill?
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Curve Street, Kansas.
Did you get the...
That's all I have, Ms. Marshall.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, the council adjourned to meet Thursday, June 3rd, 2021, at 4:30 PM. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
I do have one thing to say. Um, I think Laura and Mark is off to a great start. I think, uh, we did our best to find the best people to help our city and to help our constituents to go further. And they have a lot of good ideas, and I think they're off to a really good start. They got a lot done in nine days, so thank, thank both of you.
I have to agree with you, Mr. Shuhon. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments this evening? If not, thank you for all for coming. Thank you. Manja, manja.